Good evening, Joe.
Hi, guys.
Hey.
You ready, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening. A call to order. Meeting number seventeen seventy-nine of the Planning and Zoning Commission at six thirty-two PM. We have a quorum. We have four regular members and two alternates. In accordance with our rotation, Anne, I'm going to ask that you sit in and vote tonight. You okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. There was no legal notice. There are no added agenda items. Public participation. Are there any? Is there anyone out there that I haven't seen here? So, but I will make it formal. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any comments from the from the town members for something that's not already on tonight's agenda? I'll take that as a no. Approval of minutes, April fourteenth, twenty twenty. Is there anything? Is there any changes, edits that need to be discussed?
I have none.
I'm, I'm fine.
None.
Okay, I was good as well. Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting seventeen eighty-eight. Yeah, so seventeen eighty-eight, was that it?
Seventeen.
As written.
Seventeen seventy-eight.
Says, I'm sorry, seventeen seventy-eight.
Correct. A motion was made by Dick. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Anne. Any discussion? Here are none. A call for vote. We'll have a roll call. Joe Willett is yes.
Richard Sullivan is yes.
Jim Thurs, yes.
Anne Gobin is yes.
And Mike, if you're speaking, you're on mute. Just raise your hand.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With your distinguished, we distinguish family in the background.
That's right. I'm just flumming with the, with the friends.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Receipt of applications, there were four. I'll just have a little brief introduction to this. The in years past, the chairperson of the, of the commission just read those into the record, and they were considered accepted. Ruben has a perhaps a slightly different interpretation of the regs. I couldn't find it where it says in the regs that we need to take formal, make a formal motion to accept those. But nonetheless, there is no harm of proceeding that way until I can have a more detailed conversation, Ruben. I, I am urging the commission that we make a separate motion for each one of the applications to formally receive them tonight. Anybody have any discussions or have alternate viewpoints?
Joe, it's Anne. You said there were four applications. The copy of the agenda I'm looking at has A, B, and C, so I see that as three applications. Am I seeing something wrong?
No, no, there's Lebreckoff Autocraft, Michael Floretti, another Michael Floretti, and a text amendment. So the Michael Floretti is.
Okay, I have the text amendment, that's.
That was an.
That's on the second page.
Okay, it's. I'm missing that, but that's.
Didn't get the amended agenda?
I'm using a paper copy that was printed before that came out.
Okay. Okay.
So would someone be kind enough to offer a motion for approval for each one of the applications to be received?
I will make a motion that we notify that we have received the application of Lebreck Autocraft for a site plan review for construction of a new commercial building for automotive repair at sixty-three Newberry Road.
There's a motion that we accept the application by Dick. Is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Anne.
Second by Anne. I call for vote. All who's in favor say aye. Joe Willett?
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Anne Gobin, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
All right, I have, that is unanimous. Next up, there's a, another application.
I make a motion to receive the application of Michael Floretti for re-subdivision application to create two residential lots around two existing homes in the R-two zone, and to create one commercial lot for existing indoor soccer facility in the M-one zone. So assessor parcel ID number one oh one dash twelve dash thirty.
The motion was made by Dick to accept the application. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Anne Gobin.
Second by Anne. I call for vote. All who's in favor say aye. Joe Willett?
Dick Sullivan?
Jim Thurs?
Anne Gobin.
Mike.
That makes five. That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the other one from Mike Floretti.
Soon as I find it, Joe.
Oh, no problem.
You want me to do it?
Sure.
I'll move that we receive the application from Michael Floretti. Application PZ twenty twenty dash oh seven. It's a re-subdivision application to create two residential lots around two existing in the R-two zone and to create one commercial.
Just accepted that one, Anne.
Oh, okay.
That's the one we just voted to accept.
Yeah, we went out of order.
It's B.
Okay, so I'll do B. I move that we acknowledge receipt of the other application for Michael Floretti, PZ twenty twenty oh six. It's for a zone change application for a parcel located at two oh two Main Street for a zone change from M-one to R-two, manufacturing to residential, assessor parcel ID number map block and lot number one oh one dash twelve dash oh three oh.
A motion was made by Anne to accept the application. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. A call for vote. All who's in favor say aye. Joe Willett?
Aye, Dick Sullivan.
Aye, Jim Thurs.
Aye, Anne Gobin.
Thank you. That's unanimous. One more to do.
I make a motion to accept the application for text amendment application from East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission for text amendments related to alcohol sales, including amendments to section two oh three, the definition of alcohol sales, five oh two permitted uses in business and industrial districts, and five oh four point seven alcohol sales in the HIC, and eight oh five general requirements for alcohol sales. The changes requested would remove certain distance requirements for the sale of alcohol from other uses such as places of worship, charitable institutions, hospitals, convalescent homes, cemeteries, libraries, public playgrounds, or municipal buildings.
Motion was made by Dick to accept the text amendment application. Is there a second?
Second by Anne Gobin.
I call for vote. Joe Willett is yes.
Dick Sullivan is yes.
Anne Gobin is yes.
Jim Thurs, yes.
Mike Kowalski, yes.
That makes five. That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. I will point out that if some of these applications are ready to, are ready administratively, or like town staff, Lenny and staff have had an opportunity to look at some cases they have. Perhaps they could be, they will be added to the May agenda. The Michael Floretti one, as well as the text amendment are going to be, are going to be public hearings. So we're going to be busy in, in May discussing these applications that were received. And I don't know if anyone noted that we're redoing the text amendment for alcohol sales. I guess there was an administrative error regarding what was posted on, on the town website in the action the Planning and Zoning Commission took. There were some inconsistencies between the text that we should have had in our packets and what was actually provided for us to vote on. Nonetheless, the town attorney picked this up, and we're going to be redoing that again. That's all going to be during our, a meeting in May. So that is unfortunate, but nonetheless, that, that's, I guess, what it takes to get it right. Any questions on the applications received? Okay, I'm moving on. Just to note under the performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, or road acceptance. Over there off Deeper Road, we, we called the bond two or three meetings ago, and subsequent bonds. I went by earlier this week, and I noticed that some light milling has occurred on both of those public roadways. So work is underway. I'm not sure if that's Public Works or the contractor the Public Works Department hired, but nonetheless, work is underway.
That's, Public Works has been coordinating that and contracting it through. I also believe that as of today, the work is finished, and it was more than just doing a light, a light. They did substantial reconstruction work to Acorn Drive and just finished the top coat on farms. And that was paid for mostly in part by the outstanding bond that, that you all pulled back in March. Okay, it's been something that's ten years in the making that we can now cross off as having been accomplished.
Excellent. Great work for those truly involved. Lenny, Jason, Alan.
Len and Joe, all the way.
Joe, yep, absolutely. They receive big kudos. Okay, moving on. No continued public hearings, no new public hearings, no new business, no old business, well, actually, old business. Continued discussion regarding warehouse point planning study to include Terry Han. Hi, Terry.
Hi, guys. How's it going?
Good, thank you.
Good. I'm just here to follow up on the discussion that we had last time, which was talking about the specifics related to the two zones for the commercial recreation. I don't know if anybody else had any other thoughts with respect to that, so I'm just following up on that. And I was wondering, Jason, I have something that I'd like to put on the screen that was a late thing. Can I share the screen?
Talking to me?
No, Jason. Jason holds the keys to the share screen.
You should be all set.
Okay, thanks. This is, I just wanted to give you an example. I know we were talking about the possibility of using. Okay. Do you see warehouse point planning study, a survey on your screen or not yet?
I did have it, yes.
I got it. I got it.
All right. So we were talking about alternates to, for the public participation component here, and one of the things, I think it was difficult to comprehend what the nature of, like a survey monkey survey could be. And so I tried to put up a, sort of make, do a mock-up of how this might be set up, what kind of questions we would ask. So, you know, at the beginning, we're trying to find out who it is that's answering the survey. Very similar to what we would do with the public, you know, find out who people are. Are they residents? Are they property owners? Do they rent? You know, similar to what we would do for public participation. How important is warehouse point to you? Why? Age, you know, identifying, although I have spelling errors. And then we would do some background information, the same way that we would do for a public presentation. Throw some images up here about housing, the commercial architecture, that, you know, how, what's currently there, what kind of uses are missing, you know? Things like that, that even though we've asked those questions before, we're going to end up with alternate people there. You know, in a survey like this that they could do at their own home through the computer. But just sort of get some background information. And then just an introduction to the planning study itself, what we're trying to accomplish. There'll be some maps for orientation. And then just give people an opportunity to look at some of the images that we've created, and then ask questions about, you know, would you, given the architecture that's in that image, would you visit here? Would you shop here? Would you walk here? You know, the same things that we would do for public participation, but do it in the form of the survey monkey with the images attached. And then just start to go through, the last ones just open-ended. If people want to type, then they can go ahead and type to their heart's content and provide comments, and then ultimately just a thank you, and if there's some kind of a problem, they can print it out and send it to us. But I just wanted to give you a physical copy of what the survey monkey experience could be like, so that you could see and use that in the deliberations as to how we should go forward with this public participation component. The question I think that was asked is, you know, why don't we just hang out and wait? One of the things about planning studies is that at some point you need to be done with it. You need to move into real life. The good news here is you're already starting to get applications that are reflecting what you're talking about. You know, the application for the B-one zone up last time. The separation of the residential uses from the commercial recreation over on Main Street, which you have as an accepted application. You're starting to see people moving in the same way that you've been thinking as part of this study. That's exactly where you want to be, but we want to be done with the study before we start contradicting ourselves. Where, where reality starts to interfere, and we're always trying to catch up. So the idea is to finish the study and then move on with the business of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then make it happen. So that's kind of why I'd like to see this sort of wrap up relatively quickly and get some public participation so that we can close up the report, and you guys can go back to just getting applications.
Terry, what, what do you think success would look like on a response rate? I'm just wondering how many people would do a survey monkey?
Well, if we could get, I mean, we posted up at the, the town website. We were also thinking about sending out a mailing to let people know that the survey was available. So, you know, I mean, if we could get a hundred people, that'd be great. If forty or fifty percent of them actually were residents or property owners with warehouse point, again, that'd be great. That'd be better than what we had last time. So we're just looking to, you know, increase that awareness and participation.
Terry, this is Frank. My experience has been unless farmers are involved, you won't get ten. I hate to say that, but that's my feeling.
Had a face-to-face meeting.
You might have a better shot. Everybody's home now, and they're bored.
Yeah, really bored.
Well, I, I, I hope so, but I, I, I don't have, I don't have good vibes about doing it like, excuse me, electronically. I think town meeting would be, be in a better format, but it is what it is, I guess.
I guess I see on a daily basis on the town Facebook pages, a lot of chatting. So I think if you can get it to those people, you might succeed with your forty-plus responses.
I mean, you know, we can, we can put up a notice for Facebook, they, and link, you know, so that they, it's easy access. Everyone's pretty comfortable with the whole survey monkey tool. I think if you're comfortable with surveys, it's a fairly straightforward process, and we can go from there. If you feel that we should be going a different way, I just wanted to give you an example of what it might look like, so that you could see we could do the images, which is, I think, what you were mostly concerned about.
Can we provide some incentives to fill out the survey, like you get a free roll of toilet tissue or something?
Great idea.
Do you happen to have a container full of toilet paper?
We can throw in some ant sanitizer, too.
Well, Geisler's selling that stuff from John Fitch Distillery, though.
Let me pose the question. What is the, I mean, forget about how many true responses we get out of the survey monkey or electronic monkey survey. What is the harm of actually doing that? Is there a drawback? What are the negatives of doing something like that? Other than perhaps not enough people doing it?
One of the negatives that happens is, is just that it's, if people want to misinterpret, or if the explanations are not clear enough, sometimes it'll the response will sort of backfire on you. But I sort of take the approach that I'm setting it up the same way that I would have had I done a public presentation. So we'll get past a certain amount, but on some of it, that's why I'd like to have some open-ended questions, which is why you have to use the higher-level survey monkey. It's not just yes or no, or it gives people an opportunity to type in their responses, which helps to eliminate some of the confusion.
I personally am favored one of the options that has electronic survey. Coupled with a, a probably a virtual presentation. Because I, I, I just, I just do not foresee a face-to-face meeting anytime this summer. I, I really don't. Not that I can have, look into a crystal ball and be more predictive than anybody else, but I, I just don't see that happening within, within the time period that we're looking. We're not looking, Terry, as you said, to kick the can down the road. It's September, October, November. We're looking to do this late spring, early summer, at the latest. Anyone else have a difference of opinion? We're in another opinion?
Joe, a question I had was, is that electronic message board in front of the Warehouse Point Fire Department, is that available for public access at all? Can, can we post messages on there?
That's a good question. I don't really know who, who owns the key to that.
That's the fire department's, but we can always ask them.
I mean, that's in the center of Warehouse Point. If you post something there, even just to tell people, go to the town website, you know, to take the Warehouse Point survey, you might get at least people to go there to look.
I think it's a worthwhile suggestion to look into. Doesn't cost us anything, just agreement of other, other municipal partners.
The last time when we sent the mailings, we got a big response. I think that's also good. People are like, hey, you know, what's going on in my neighborhood? Kind of deal. I know it costs money for that, but it rattles the cage a little bit.
We have the budget for that, so that, that would be, you know, it's sort of as a precursor. You know, to let you know that the survey is coming. If you don't have, I can put on it, if you don't have a computer, you can call us and we'll, we'll send you a paper copy, those sort of things, so that you can bypass that internet inequity issue.
So Terry, if, if you had the final decision, or strongly twist our arms, however you want to call it. Apparently, you like to do the survey, and I, I support the survey, but would you also pursue a virtual meeting?
I have no problem with doing that. I, I mean, I'm assuming that we do a virtual, you mean like a presentation like what we're doing here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Walking through a series of slides, a PowerPoint presentation, like you would do if there was a live audience.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to set it up anyway, because that's how I think, and, you know, it's, that's how the, the survey gets done. So I'd be happy to do the presentations, both to the planning and zoning, and if, if needed, to the Board of Selectmen. As well as I suggest sending a mailing, notifying people that the survey exists, and then set the survey up through the town website and whatever links on Facebook that, that we need to do.
Anne, how do you feel about what we're talking about?
I support moving forward. I think the idea of mailing to residents and property owners in Warehouse Point, having the survey, and having the PowerPoint online somewhere where people can either, you know, hear it on a Zoom, but have it recorded, so people could watch it at another time if they so chose.
So that's kind of a good question. How does the recording of the Zoom meetings actually work? Can you, can you post that on the website and watch it or hear it or something later on? I don't know how that's working out.
Well, I, I can't answer that, but how about an alternate version of that? What would happen if you were to post a PowerPoint presentation in advance of actually giving it? So you offer electronic survey. If they want more information, they can go, they can go through their own, the slides at their own pace and look at it that way for a little more depth on some of the questions.
So in, in that case, if I was going to do a standalone PowerPoint, in other words, I would probably have more text on the PowerPoint. You know, a lot of times we abbreviate the text on the PowerPoint, allow the speaker to, to expand upon that. I'll probably make it a little bit more wordy than I would otherwise do, so that people can get the information through, if, if they're on their own.
Yeah, this is Frank. I think that's a great idea.
Is there a technology to take a PowerPoint and apply, I'll say, voiceover to it?
I, I've done that once, but the audio file was so big that most of the computers broke trying to file it. So I don't, if there is a technology to do like a voiceover to a PowerPoint, I don't have it. That might be something that, like, public access or somebody knows how to do. Because I've done that before, where we, where we were doing voiceover work for a documentary. But I would need a little assistance.
Yeah, I, I was kind of hoping the Zoom recording could just get posted, but I don't know enough about it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we could post the Zoom meeting that's recorded. I think with, currently, they get, they get posted where our YouTube stuff got posted, so we could just advertise that link on the town web page, and anybody can go see it there.
That's perfect.
I would try to keep it under thirty minutes if I could. You know, my presentations tend to go a little long, and I don't think that people want to sit and watch a YouTube video that's an hour and a half long.
Unless we all were to do a little skit that went with it.
Write the script and.
No, a skit, a skit.
Yeah, I know, but you have to have a script, right, and costumes, so.
We'll have a little puppet show or something. Make it interesting.
All right.
Dick, I haven't heard from you on this one. How do you feel about what we're talking about?
I guess I'm just old school on this. I see no adequate substitute for face-to-face. Yeah, and big poster boards put out there, the. Yeah, and big poster boards put out there that people could look at and interact with each other at the time. Any one of these, would it work? Yes, in my opinion, it's a poor substitution, but we don't necessarily have that option to go, go anymore. Time is not necessarily on our side.
Okay, thank you. Jim, anything more to add on the topic?
No, I agree to everything what everybody's saying.
Hey Frank, you have anything more to add on this one? I know you've been commenting, piping in along here.
No, this is Frank. No, I kind of, I'm kind of with Richard. I'm kind of old school, but I think we've got all the bases covered and it is what it is. The only problem I, I can foresee is if somewhere down the line, a year from now or whatever, somebody's gonna say, well, we were left out or we're, we're, you know, we're up at the old age home, we don't have computers, blah, 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 blah. I guess that's what goes with the territory.
Yeah, that's true, and I, I guess I don't really have a good answer for that.
But, but I am in favor of what's, what's been proposed and, and I think Terry's worked her butt off getting this ready and it's about time she presents it and gets her pay.
So Terry, we talked about a couple different variations. Do you want to try to put it together in your head, what you think the next step should be, so we're all clear as to the direction? Forget about what month you were gonna plan to, we know it's sooner than later.
Right. No, no, and, and quite honestly, you know how I feel. I like to do a draft with you guys before we do anything that goes public, so that you can see it and, you know, find all the, oh, yeah, that's not gonna work, elements that go into play. So that's not, that's not where I, I'm not gonna worry about that at this point. I think the idea is to put together the PowerPoint so that we have a flow. I'll translate that into a draft for the survey, so that it, it connects, uses the same language, so that I'll put those things together and then those, once they, they make sense, then we'll do a a meeting, a Zoom meeting and presentation with the PowerPoint, so that people have that information available. Although, let me step back. I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll mail out the notice of the Zoom meeting and the survey. Do the Zoom meeting first for the presentation and then open the link at the end of the presentation to the survey, if people want to, to respond, and then post both the, the link to the survey and the Zoom meeting information through Facebook, maybe at the firehouse, on the, on the town website for the survey, just so that it, it's kind of a sequence. So the final product, although we'll have the presentation on the PowerPoint, the final product will be the results from, from the survey that comes out when we close the survey. The survey will be a time-specific open date, you know, so it'll be open for 15 days, 20 days, something like that. It's, so that when people get, they look at their mail one week and then they open it the second week, they'll have time to be able to participate. So I think that that's probably the way it will go. I'll take the survey results, the PowerPoint presentation, and start to put that final report together. The final report then gets combined with the previous one that we had to submit to you for a draft, for your review before you, and whatever comments and changes, before you accept it, the, the report as filed, basically.
At what point in the process do you need to present to the Board of Selectmen?
At this point, I think we're still scheduled for the May Board of Selectmen meeting. I have that on my agenda. I'm not sure that's true yet or not, Jason, I'm not sure. But I was gonna do a draft presentation to them and then once we have the PowerPoint, I'd be, I'll do a second presentation to them as well.
Okay. Another question. Do you think the virtual meeting, when we, when we discuss this and give your presentation, it should be part of an existing agenda where we should have a special meeting?
It's really your call. Let's see how the timing works. It's probably easier if it's part of an existing meeting for you guys, so you're not, you know, doing a second version. But let's, we want to make sure that we have the PowerPoint in hand. We send out the mailing, so everybody knows what it is, and post that, so it'll, there'll be a little bit of a lag time from when we know that's gonna happen, so that it gets noticed. So that can either be at a next scheduled meeting or a special meeting. That's, that's really your call.
Okay. So we just received four applications tonight. I'm hoping that we're able to clear the, clear the, our plate during our May agenda. And maybe we might have an opportunity to talk about this at the earliest, the last, our second meeting in May, or maybe in June? Is that, am I being too optimistic?
Oh, no, no. I, I mean, I think, I think the earliest that we're gonna be, you know, for a public component, will be the first meeting in June at this point.
Okay, all right, fine.
So my, my suggestion is if we're going to take and repost as a reference point, it, it may need to be standalone rather than incorporated with all the other topics of discussion. Cause if we start our meeting in our normal manner, people may just click off of it, thinking it's not the right post.
We could always arrange the agenda or take things out of order on purpose to get to that i, the item right up front.
That, that would be acceptable. Or I don't know if it's possible to crop out a section of the recording just for the repost.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, the repost, yes.
Yeah.
I was thinking maybe you'd like have a special meeting on the same date of one of your regular meetings and have it like maybe before for a half an hour, so you can just record the recording, the presentation, and then be done with that meeting and move on to your other business, or some kind of variation of that.
Okay. Alan, I like that idea. And I, perhaps the special meeting could start the normal 6:30 and we just delay the regular scheduled meeting to begin at seven, or 7:15 or whatever it is. Call that meeting to order. Have, have two, two meetings on the same day. And you have two distinct files regarding what we're, when you're recording it.
Makes sense.
Anyone else have any comments on this one issue? I know Terry brought up two or three things to talk about regarding our public hearing options. Anything else on this one topic?
I'm good.
I'm, I'm good with it.
This is Frank. I'm good with it so far. It's up to Terry. I think it's her call, really.
Okay, well, I haven't heard anything in the negative, so why don't we go with that plan, Terry?
Okay.
You also prompted us with some other, you're looking for some additional feedback? You want to talk about that now, where you have some other things to talk about regarding the Warehouse Point study?
No, I, I was really just looking for, you know, direction with respect to the public participation, so that I can start to work that together and finish everything up in a form that is useful based on how we want to deal with public participation, because it's a different, slightly different formats. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the kind of less plans, more images, we're gonna need for standalone things. So that, that kind of thing. So I just really wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to remind you to look at the final land use map, the future land use and the zoning map that I had previously given you. So if you, if you would take a little bit of time and look at that and look at it really closely, see how the twists and turns of the different zones work. The information that is provided on there in terms of allowed uses, special permit uses, restrictions, distances, that sort of thing, makes sense to you, because they're gonna be translated into bulk tables relatively quickly. That'll be, that'll be part of the final report. So I just want to make sure, we can always modify a couple things, but if, kind of in the big picture, am I, do I have a 70%, 75%? Are, are we all on the same page? That's what I would really like to make sure that we're there.
I know that you had prompted us last meeting for those comments. Does anyone have anything at this time to share with Terry? I thought about it and I honestly, I, I don't know if I would do it much differently. I don't have any other grand ideas other than what you've already put down. That's my opinion.
This is Frank and I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't have any other suggestions.
This is Dick. I'm, I'm fine with it too. I, I've always felt and I still feel that it's, it's gonna come down to, or it may come down to, we get one big developer in there and that'll, that'll, that'll be the driving engine for what really happens.
This is Jim. I'm, I'm fine with everything.
I, I'm sorry. I, I do have a comment about the previous discussion though. What would it cost to put flyers in every grocery bag at Geisler's?
I'm not sure. I'll, I'll find out if they would charge us for anything. I, I mean, the, the thing that we found out though about Geisler's, which was a surprise, was how many people, you know, from our, the stuff that we did in the summer, about one in 15 were actually residents of East Windsor and one in 20 were residents of Warehouse Point. So Geisler's brings a lot of people from Enfield and Windsor Locks. So it's not really the targeted audience. We'd be much better off, I think, putting the flyers directly to the property owners. Doesn't hit the renters, but it at least gets the property owners notified.
Good point.
And I get, I, I kind of like that approach. It also provides a touch point where like some sort of record that we try outreach with the, the stakeholders in the area, just another proof that we try to do due diligence or reaching everyone we possibly could.
Okay.
Terry, on the presentation, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that part of the study is the stormwater management and, and the effects of the blue ditch.
Right.
And the, the stormwater management is not an easy topic for laypeople to understand. I'm a civil engineer and I struggle with it too. Probably not many people in the audience here. Probably Lenny is the only person that, and you and Lenny are the, the authorities on this topic. But nonetheless, you have to bring that into the study, because that was, that was at the core. But at, at what level? I remember early in the process, you really schooled us regarding high water marks. I forget all the different terminology you used. I think you might lose somebody, but at some point you do have to incorporate that. You just gotta be judicious and, and very thoughtful how you bring that into the conversation or into the discussion or the presentation.
I think that some of the, from that presentation that you were talking about, I think some of the slides and some of the graphics that we came up with for that presentation help move that discussion along quicker. And, and so I, I feel fairly confident that we can get people up to a similar vocabulary. What we're working on right now is to take the conclusions that came out of the post-stormwater calculations and come up with a graphic to show, not just a chart, because everyone loses the numbers, it doesn't matter. Nobody knows what CFS is, but what we're doing is we're translating it into water levels and putting it on the plan, so that people, people can actually physically see what that means. And that's, that's one of the things that we're, we're trying to see, how to make that graphic more accessible and less technical.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of people in that area who don't even know what the blue dish even is. They're like, you know, like, hey, that runs in my backyard. I have no idea what that dent in the ground is. They have no clue. Be honest with you.
I also wonder if I'll fully comprehend that they're in a flood zone and if they ever go to do anything, what that means to them.
I was surprised at the summer presentation. I'd say it was about 50/50. Some people knew right away, they just had a mortgage and of course they have flood insurance. And some people looked at me like, I'm, I'm not really sure what you mean. So it was 50/50.
Terry, what if you took the, the graphic that you had of South Water Street with the new construction, the houses elevated on silt? If you took that and then imposed some water levels based on, you know, the 100-year flood or the 50-year flood levels or, you know, it's saying, okay, this is the potential. If we had this kind of an event, this is where the water would be on South Water Street. And showing the need, that's why we're proposing elevated housing, because otherwise anything you build there is gonna be underwater.
I can do that. That makes a lot of sense. Yep, I, I've seen that before where you take a blue lot, you know, like a blue wash and put it over the photograph. I can, you know, I can generally, based on the floor-to-floor elevations, guess what the 35 elevation is. So I, I think that that would work fine. Yes, makes sense. That would be very helpful.
Yeah, that kind of takes your, your study, rather than taking it from a graph and numbers, putting it into a visual.
Yep. Thank you. That, that's a great idea.
Yeah, that, that's a perfect example of a picture being worth a thousand words.
Exactly.
Does anyone else have anything for Terry? Or Terry, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else at this time.
I don't hear anyone else wishing to speak, so thank you, Terry.
All right, no problem.
Anything to soon?
Yeah, I'll be at the, the next agenda, but it just, or either that or I might have stuff to hand out. So we'll, we'll play that one by ear. It might be easier if I just give you handouts, because it sounds like your next meeting is gonna be pretty busy.
Okay. If, if you, if you want to hand out something and just have a very brief moment, what we could do is we could consider taking something out of order to give you a few minutes right up front to explain a handout and we'll let you on your way.
Okay, all right. I'm flexible.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks again, Terry.
Enjoy May Day.
Thank you.
Wondered, one of the tricky things about May Day is there are no flowers, so you can't give people flowers, so. You guys have a good one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving along in the agenda, we're almost at the finish line here. Nothing under other business, nothing under correspondence. And just a few things to talk in general about our business meeting. From select commissioners that they'd like to get paper copies, where paper copies of the agenda items in the, in the submittals would be helpful. How many people feel that way?
Oh, I certainly do.
This is Frank. I'm all in favor of that.
I, I printed out everything that got sent to us.
Yeah, I can't look at the screen and do without paper, so I find it necessary. And Jason's been kind enough to print me copies.
I, I agree. I like to pack. I like to highlight it on my highlighter.
Years ago, we'd give out paper copies, not give out, provide paper copies to the commission, but for budgetary reasons, that was, that was discontinued. And I'm going back two or three years. And I guess since then, you know, the paper copies have been made available at the town hall. You just had to go there and get it. So in this environment, how, how, how does one get the paper copies to, to somebody? We don't have anyone, we don't have a courier service.
This is Len. Quite honestly, if anybody wants packages, we've been accepting plans and the checks at Public Works. I have a window basically that opens and people hand me in the plans and the checks through the windows and we could, we could do the same thing if, if, if the applicants, you know, generally the applicants supply paper copies of everything. And I have some paper copies of, I have paper copies of LaBrec. I have paper copies of the... I have paper copies of LaBrec, I have paper copies of the, of the zone change map and re-subdivision map in my office. If anybody would like copies of that, if they just called the office, generally Joe or I are there anyhow. You can kinda knock on the window and, and we can pass it out to you if we're not paying attention, if we're busy working. We can certainly make it available to you at, at Public Works.
Len, um, what we really, I shouldn't say we, I really need is the full package where you have the agenda and you have all the documents. So you can look at it while you're talking. And that does get, I guess, posted on the town website, but if you don't have heavy duty printer at home, it's hard to print that much material. So I don't know if it's possible for you to go to the website and hit print to the staff if you have anybody in the office. But, I mean, I'm happy to drive anywhere and to anybody's window and pick it up at either a designated time or make an appointment to have it tossed out a window.
Uh, uh, I do not have, uh, the only people in my office are Joe and I because we can socially distance, we, uh, far enough apart. My administrative assistant is working from home, answering the phone and, and doing what she can and processing invoices and what have you. The packages I think are mostly, plans are the big thing that are like usually two by three feet. And they, and well, actually I do get copies of all the applications and the plans and what have you, and, and certainly we get a copy of the agenda. I, I think we could supply you with pretty much the entire package. We, I think the, uh, applicants really submit it when, when they submit them, even though they're coming electronically. They're also either mailing them or dropping them off at my office. Some were dropped off at the town hall that Jason made sure that we got. You know, I don't know if you know it, but Joe and I, um, I've been doing a lot of the planning in wetlands. And you know, it, it's a bit cumbersome doing it of my own job, doing the planning and zoning in wetlands. And Joe doing a, a lot of these inspections or zoning enforcement. So we're, we're kinda pressed for time at this point, but we certainly could, the packages are in our office and we certainly could hand them off to anybody that wants one.
All right, good. It, it's, it, you know, I'm, I'm speaking for myself here and I think I could probably speak for Ann too. It, it's so much easier to get the big picture on paper than it is attempting to get it on the computer. You, you, it's just not the same.
Yeah, I, I find for reading the minutes, I need to read on paper. It's just who I am.
Lenny, my, my, my biggest problem is, is the prints. You know, you see something on a computer here. I don't have good eyes to start with and I just like the big two by three prints that I can really look at and examine. That's my biggest problem.
Joe, Peg?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I've got some, um, I've got some postage money. If I could, I could mail you guys packets until we can meet in person if that's helpful. If, um, Peg's been helpful in terms of putting the packets together. Len, Len and I are, are both in taking the documentation. Once I get a complete set, I can either mail them to you or we can get them to you one way or the other. You guys can have paper copies. That shouldn't be prohibitive.
Know where the garage is.
Yeah. Were very easy to find.
He meant his garage, Len.
Oh, that garage. That's easy to find too.
I have to say thank you to Jason because he's been wonderful about printing a copy for me.
And I'm, I agree a hundred percent. It's just, for me, that would be the best.
Happy to help.
Is there anybody in the planning and zoning office at all?
Well, Jason, are, are, are you at liberty to, um, to talk about some of the events?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Ruben is out with a, a prolonged illness. Um, he's, I thought he was coming back, uh, this week. It now looks like it won't be till next week or maybe the week after. Judy has, uh, resigned effective May 8th. So, um, she's, her last day being for the town was April 24th. She, she gave her two weeks and then she's moving on. Um, and then Amanda is going to be, taking maternity leave effective May 8th. She's expecting her child, which is wonderful. I can't imagine having a newborn in these circumstances. I'd go out of my mind. So that's good news for her. So Peg is the, um, the captain of the ship in that, in that office for the time being. But in terms of, um, the, the planning functionality, Len is, has been delegated with most of the functions that Ruben would be normally operating under, so as to keep business flowing. And Joe has stepped up, uh, Joe Sauerhofer has stepped up, um, to serve as our zoning enforcement officer for the time being. So I think, and I was talking to Chairman Lett last night, you know, there will be some bumps in the road, but I have great confidence in Len and Joe to backfill both of those positions. Although I do recognize that it is quite a lot on their plate on top of what they were already working on. But that's kind of the, the long and short of where we are for the time being. Um, any particular questions about that?
No, thank God. We got, we got two guys stepping up to the plate to, to fill in the void because we'd be in big trouble.
And that, you know, to their, to their credit, um, they volunteered and they, they never for a second said, you know, this is, this is more than we can take on. Their response to anything that I'm, that I ask of them is we'll get it done. I'm very grateful to both of them.
And it's incredible. And thank you to Peg for what she's doing too.
Absolutely.
Peg is, Peg is the constant there.
But Peg is there 15 hours and you were talking about 40 hours for other people to get this all done. So it's not really that easy. You know what I'm saying?
Oh yeah, but you're getting it to us, Peg.
Yeah.
Peg, I, I suspect that you should get a raise and.
I'm sure I'll get a raise. Perhaps that monetary.
Jason, since you are so short of people, is there any possibility Peg is having to put in a lot more hours to cover that she could work more hours?
Uh, offhand, I don't have an issue with that. I'm not sure that she's interested in that.
Okay. I just figured if she was, what she was trying to say was she's putting in more than 15 hours. I was maybe.
What I'm trying to say is I'm going to have to. I mean, people, Amanda is putting in what? 30, 40 hours? And she's supporting PCC. You have a lot of intense applications coming up for review at the next PCC meeting. You're going to need support documentation. You're going to need that ahead of time. You do want your paper copy. I cannot do that in 15 hours. Because all that was getting done, I support wetlands. I do ag conservation. That's my 15 hours. Somebody else has to work in another somehow hours. So I'm just saying, can't do it in 15. You know, I mean, you just, you just can't take two and a half people or two and a third people and all of a sudden throw that into, you know, 15 hours.
So Peg, are you willing to put in more hours than the 15?
I don't see that I have any, any option, Ann. If, if you guys need this. And, and my concern is you are working on applications which have timeframes. Timeframes which need to be completed. If you don't complete them, there are legal ramifications to that. Am I right? Wrong? I mean, is that not true?
Well, the legal ramification would be an automatic approval.
Okay.
Without conditions of approval, which is.
Well, that's another thing, you know, who's going to do that staff memo for you? You, you're going to be sitting there doing your, your wordsmithing. So you guys have got to prepare for that unless Len is going to do you memos.
So this is a, a staffing personnel discussion. Uh, it might be best if, um, we take this offline and, and Peg, Len, Joe and I get on the same page ahead of Amanda leaving.
I agree with that.
Uh, this is Frank. I agree with that a hundred percent.
I think you need to do that relatively quickly. May 8th is not that far away. And this is her second child. Do they not come quickly, more quickly?
I really think the purpose of this discussion was to bring the commission members up to speed regarding the, uh, the staffing, um, constraints, the planning zoning office is under right now. That's all.
Yep.
Yeah, and, you know, that just puts the whole thing in a different light too. That, you know, it's a small thing, I guess, to not be able to get the big picture on the computer, but to get something.
Yep.
Okay, um, I don't have anything else. Does anyone, anybody else have anything for discussion?
Yeah, Joe, this is Frank. Um, you know, this alcoholic beverage sales and, you know, changing the distances between churches and, and worship and all that. Not personally, but I think there's going to be some concern from the public. And I'm not so sure that they're going to be able to do this again electronically. I think, I, I think there might be a problem there that we have to do a lot of thinking about that.
Okay. Well, when we have our public hearing, I guess so, we'll certainly, um, open up the, o, o, open up the dialogue and we'll, 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 um, we'll have the appropriate discussion. Really what we're doing regarding the, the tax amendment is, is a redo or refresh to get the record right. Which requires going through the entire process again, re-referral to CROG, having a legal notice, post in the meeting, going through the process, having our discussion, talking about it again and calling for a vote. Uh, we, we're really, if this would have been unnecessary if, um, if we had the right wording in front of us and, and, and it wasn't a huge, um, huge change. It's just a couple, couple changes here and there. But I hear you. Obviously we'll, uh, it's, it's really not appropriate to go into detail now, but certainly when we have that, that, that discussion, let's, let's hear it all.
My, my only concern is that I think we have to put some thought into this and make sure that we have all the bases covered.
Okay.
Jason has that, you know, I'm sure he's done that from what I can see. But it, it, that's a trouble, you know, troubling to me. I think we're going to have a problem. I hope not, but.
Okay. Well, fair enough. Ann, anything for good of the order?
Not for me.
Okay, Dick?
No, I'm, I'm all set, Joe. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Where are we on zoning issues still? The same?
I'm not really sure. We had, we had a six or seven outstanding items. And, um, I don't know if it's, I don't think that, uh, Joe, in fairness to him, is probably dealing with that. He's probably dealing with other emergencies, talking about Joe Sauerhofer. I don't, I don't think he's really, uh, probably addressed any of those.
Or, I'm sorry, uh, Mr.
Actually.
Are, are you talking about zoning enforcement issues, Jim?
Yes.
So, uh, both, uh, predominantly, but Len as well have, have been, uh, conducting, um, inspections and enforcement activities where necessary. Um, on about six or eight different, um, locations. That have, that have come in over the last couple of weeks. Uh, they can speak specifically to which ones they are. Or if you have a question about, um, a specific, uh, inspection that, that you feel is outstanding. I know that they have, um, started looking into that. That's, that's not been something that we're putting on the back burner and actually was one of the things that precipitated, uh, the reassignment of those duties.
I'm sure if those guys are on it, things are getting done.
Well, this, uh, Len here, uh, we have been out to a number of, uh, sites. We actually have been able to resolve a few of them by simply making a phone call and explaining to people what they need to do. There's been the fact, I don't, I don't know what happened prior to the planner being sick and leaving the office, which we're now working on, I believe, the fourth week. But unfortunately, uh, voicemails and emails were going into that office and nothing was coming out of it. So people were getting frustrated and started doing things they probably shouldn't do. However, we ended up with a list of, of items that needed attention and I bet I took care of four of them just by making phone calls and, and asking people what they were doing and tell them what they needed to do. They simply applied for zoning permits for what they needed to or wetlands permits. A little communication went a long way, actually.
Amen. Amen.
Len, I, I don't want to speak for some other commission members, but there, we had six or seven reoccurring, zoning enforcement issues that, um, that Ruben was tracking for months. And I don't know if, Jim, that's what you were really referring to. I'm going to give you an example. There's a perceived auto repairs going on at an address on Harrington Road. That was one example. And there's a whole bunch of other ones. These weren't things that recently popped up on the radar. These have been legacy issues that have been going on for months. And I see that they dropped off our agenda for discussion. Ruben had been giving us a briefing. Oh yeah, the, he got the marshals involved, serving papers, those type of things. Is Jim, was that more what you were asking about?
Yeah, I was asking about that and Church Street and a couple of other ones.
If, if I could, this is Joe, if I could just interject, if y'all would give me till your next meeting, I could probably answer 90% of your questions.
Done more and the next, till the next meeting and zoning enforcement offers is done in six months.
So this is Jason from the Board of Selectmen. Um, we have kind of constructed that list as best as we're able, but as we, uh, visit through the, the planning department, their record keeping is challenging. So we have, we have a hot list of, um, again, six or eight different locations, church is one of them. 34 Harrington Road, I know is one of them as well. There are others.
Well, Jay, I could tell you, there's, there's probably about 17 or 18 open, I guess you would call them cases. You've got Pleasant Street, North Road. Like I say, I mean, shooting, I'm, I'm not prepared to answer any questions about them, but if y'all will give me until your next meeting, I will be able to give you the list of what we've been working on and what we've done so far.
Joe, it just, it's, it's refreshing to know that those hadn't been forgotten and somebody's on them. I think that's really all that matters to me anyway.
I could tell you this, that, um, I've done site visits at least three to four times a week, if not more. And sometimes even on the weekend when I go by them and I just make notes and like right now, I'm just compiling. I have a lot of questions about the enforcement end of it, but at least if I can come to you guys and tell you what we have, you might all be able to steer me in the proper direction and we can, we can close them out and be able to keep on top of them.
Wonderful. I appreciate it. Okay, has any final thoughts before we consider adjourning for tonight? Jason, any final words?
No, I just, uh, want to thank you guys for continuing to work under these kind of challenging circumstances and for your understanding as, as me and my team trying to adapt to, um, staying on top of things that we're trying to stay on top of. Um, I shared with Chairman Lett last night and I'll, I'll reiterate, I have complete confidence, um, in Len and Joe to get this job done. Some of the process stuff might be a little bit bumpy and I take responsibility for that, but with your, uh, indulgence, we'll, we'll get this, we'll get this right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Did they get a raise?
Peg, do you have anything else? Do we cover the, the items that we had talked about? Okay, thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. This is Ann.
All in favor? Aye.
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 There's three ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Five ayes. Five ayes. It unanimous. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a good night.